All right, welcome everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. The November 6th Board of Supervisors, 3 o'clock session. We are pleased to have Pastor Jeff Dixon from Salem Baptist Church to give the invocation. Thank you for that.
Let us pray. Father God, we recognize that you, as your word says, are the giver of every good and perfect thing that we enjoy. And Lord, our county, its leadership, and the many blessings you've entrusted her with are good gifts. And Lord, we thank you for them. And in this season of giving, God, we pray that we might give of ourselves one to each other, and that in so doing, we may be good neighbors to each other. Lord, teach us what it means to be neighborly. And Lord, give us wisdom and understanding to that end. And Lord, we pray the same wisdom and understanding to our county's leadership. And we ask that you would preside over this meeting and every meeting that we host, Lord, that every decision made would yield grapefruit for our county and the surrounding areas. And Lord, be a blessing as we seek to live the lives that you've called us to live. We thank you in advance for what you will do, and we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I just have a couple of comments. Again, I want to welcome you all today. And tonight is a very important time for us, a very important meeting. We'll talk later on today at the 6 o'clock session, or 6:30, I guess, about the technology overly district and related issues. I would ask that if anyone here wants to speak about that, since it's an agenda item, it's proper to hold off until we address the issue at that time. So that's not going to be something we're going to address during this 3 o'clock session. So with that in mind, I'll ask our county administrator, Dr. Rayly, if you have some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey, and good afternoon, everyone. I hope that you're well. A couple announcements for the benefit of our community. First is that we are going to hold a special tire amnesty and document shredding event to take place on Saturday, November the 15th. That'll take place from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Fairgrounds Road, Fairground Road property, which is near our food line here in town. There will be a 10 tire limit. Participants must show proof of Goochlin County residency, and they must be off the rim. And for those in our agricultural community, we will be accepting ag tractor, those kinds of heavy-duty tires at that event. That same day, we'll also have a document shredding, so it's a great opportunity for you to shred all your old stuff, for banker's boxes no larger than 12 by 24 per person, again, showing proof of Goochlin residency. Please take out the paper clips and the staples so that we do not have any issues with our equipment. For the benefit of our community, a few things that I wanted to share in addition to those two items. We will be hosting an open house for our Virginia Department of Health, the Health Department here in this building, on the 13th of November, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We are going to hear from Dr. Frank and his team today from our Health Department. It's an opportunity to discuss clinical services offered by the Health Department, WIC Nutrition opportunities, the Environmental Health Program, the Lockstone Education, and their car seat program. They'll have some free giveaways and a chance to meet the staff, so I hope that you're able to join us for that. In this setting, I've been providing some information to our community about things that maybe our residents did not know, and so I call this the "Did You Know" segment. And so I'm really proud of the work of our volunteers associated with the recent elections on Tuesday, the workers, our staff, the Board of Elections, and everyone who really contributes to a successful election here in Goochlin County. And so I wanted to share that we had 7,504 early voters who voted either in-person or absentee, 1,377 male absentee ballots, and 8,077 voting on Election Day, for a total of 16,942, voting out of a total of 24,225 registered voters. That's a turnout of 70%. And this community takes their elections seriously, and we have always been at the top of turnout across the Commonwealth. At this time, we are second only to Shenandoah County, who had a whopping 78% turnout rate. So huge thanks to everyone who made that possible, and just a debt of gratitude for our internal staff, volunteers, and everyone who made these elections so successful in our community. Today, we're going to hear from Mr. Cock, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and so in preparation for his presentation, "Did you know that our Parks and Recreation grounds crew," and I see that they are led by Carl Lacy, who's here today, "that grounds crew maintains 347 acres of public parkland with only eight full-time staff? They also take care of our sports fields, county facilities, and other areas around our community." So thank you, team, for what you do to keep Goochlin beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next on the agenda, we'll hear from Mr. Heller.
Yeah.
And quarterly awards for our employees.
Yeah, so Board members and members of the public, this is the first of an annual process, or a quarterly process, where we want to take the opportunity to recognize our employees who are doing amazing work and service to our community. And so today, we're publicly going to recognize the employee of the quarter, the team of the quarter, the rookie of the quarter, our leader of the quarter, and our customer service star of the quarter. And we have some special things for them, and I want to take this moment to recognize their contributions to Goochlin County. So, Mr. Heller, we'll turn it over to you.
Members of the Board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Rayly, thank you for having us up. Yes, we are going to recognize today our employee award winners for quarterly awards. We are going to start with our team of the quarter, and we may have a few of them in the back here. This is the Department of Public Utilities, so let me take a few minutes to just recognize them. This team maintains over 122 miles of water main and over 121 miles of sewer main, and gives all-around five-star customer service. They also serve over 3,000 customers. The members of this team serve county staff and residents with equal respect, professionalism, and urgency. The service they give to everyone is excellent and fair across the board. Every day, they're putting customers' needs before their own. They work hard to make sure that every need is met and issues are resolved. Even when the department was in a leadership transition, the team stayed true and steady, continuing to receive great public response to their efforts. And I'm going to go through their names, there's quite a few of them. First one is our director, Elizabeth McDonald. Then we have Dennis Jones, our Operations Manager, John Marcus, Utility Superintendent, Brandon McKinney, Construction Manager, Chris Mann, Construction Technician, Rachel Tripp, Engineering Technician, Dylan Clark, Utilities Technician, Ethan Whitley, Utility Operator 2, Mark Wild, Utility Operator 1, Rick Shawna Smith, Utility Operator 1, Thomas Riley, our new utility locator, Ashley Koch, our Utility Business Manager, and Leslie Morton, Customer Service Center Supervisor, and Brandy Marion, our Senior Customer Service Specialist. If y'all could come up to the front.
Congratulations.
Woo! Teamwork!
Our next award winner is Leader of the Quarter. That is Jennifer Brown. Jennifer consistently demonstrates a remarkable willingness to help regardless of person, department, organization, or situation. She approaches every challenge with determination and a keen eye for detail, thoroughly investigating issues to offer thoughtful, practical solutions. Jennifer's compassion shines through in her daily interactions. She regularly checks in on others, offering a kind word, a helping hand, or a warm smile, often just when it's needed most. Her leadership is evident in her oven-wavering commitment to her community and to the people she works with and supports every day. In addition to leading the number-one DMV Select Office in the state, she, her office recently participated in the Commissioners and CANS Program, donating 287 pounds of food to Goochlin Cares. Couple more amazing stats. Goochlin DMV, as I said, has processed 71,342 transactions for fiscal year 2025, averaging almost 6,000 transactions monthly. They are number one in the state out of 62 DMV Select locations, and number two out of the 62 DMV locations, plus four auto auctions. Come on up, Jennifer Brown. As a last comment, Jennifer also is celebrating her 30th year with Goochlin County. All right, our next award winner is the Employee of the Quarter. That would be Elliot Waugh. So Elliot. Elliot is very knowledgeable, friendly, and ready to take the assignment when he gets an IT work order. He always resolves customer issues with a smile. He's always happy to jump in and has amazing patience with all of our technology questions and issues and needs. Elliot has been a standing member of the Goochlin County IT Department since joining in 2021. Recently promoted to System Support Analyst 3, he continues to set the standard for professionalism, teamwork, and technical excellence. Elliot's strong technical skills span desktop support, systems admin, and troubleshooting. He plays a key role, he has played a key role this quarter, in improving the county's SharePoint environment and streamlining daily operations through smarter, more efficient workflows. His calm approach, problem-solving ability, and commitment to learning have earned him the trust of staff across all departments. Elliot's positive attitude and dedication make him an invaluable part of Goochlin County's success, so. Alrighty, our next award winner is Customer Service Star of the Quarter, Lindsay Tucker. Lindsay has been with the county for three and a half years. She started out as a Customer Service Specialist for building inspection and was quickly promoted to Senior Specialist. She handles the processing of all commercial permit applications, including building, electrical, gas, mechanical, plumbing, and fire, as well as residential electrical permit applications. Some positive feedback. Lindsay's passion and knowledge of her job is outstanding. Every question or issue anyone has, she responds to quickly and professionally, providing accurate information and conveys that information in an understandable way to everyone. She is also kind and cares for her teammates. Lindsay is the epitome of efficiency, dedication, thoroughness, and a Customer Service Star in her role as the Senior Customer Service Specialist in the CSC. Her work ethic is amazing. She completes tasks in record time and always willing to make, to take on more responsibilities. She does this all with a warm, friendly approach to customers that visit the CSC or to those she speaks to over the telephone. We are blessed as a county to have such an exceptional team member. Another comment. When I think of Lindsay, I think positive, dependable team player. Her entire team has the utmost confidence in her ability. She is a problem solver and always, and is always willing to help others. Customers know they can count on Lindsay to see tasks through. Another recently submitted comment from a customer reads, "Lindsay Tucker was very helpful and a delight to talk about how to fix our issues with our permits." So, thank you, Lisa Lindsay. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, our Rookie of the Quarter is Cheryl Mears in General Services. Cheryl is super energetic and friendly. Since starting, she has hit the ground running and has not stopped. She has become a real asset to the team and is appreciated by her team for everything she does. The team has received several comments about her friendliness and the great job she is doing to keep things clean. Cheryl greets everyone with a warm smile and a friendly hello. She has never met a stranger. She is always ready to help and step in for support no matter the task. Recently, when the team was preparing for an off-site meeting, she offered to locate and bring items that were accidentally left behind to the meeting place. Her smile and can-do attitude make a big difference during this stressful situation. Dr. Rayly himself has told me that Cheryl keeps an office cleaner better than, better than his house, so. Come on down. Again, congratulations to all award winners.
Thank you, Clint. What a pleasure that it was and is. You know, I've interacted with some of these folks, and the morale, the competency, the knowledge and ability of these folks, second to none. We are, we are blessed to have such quality folks working. And you know, often, it's easy to take for granted some, you know, behind the scenes, you know, they don't get a lot of exposure or credit or whatever, but they help keep this county running smooth, and we are proud of all of you all, so thank you. Let's see. Next item would be the request to postpone Agenda Item additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we add an item to the Board of Supervisors Agenda Item Section 12.3, New Business, to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget with respect to what I believe was a Scrivener's error in the funding for the Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District.
There's a motion. Do we have a second? Well, we don't have a second.
Well, then, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion, thank you. Next would be the Citizen Comment Period, and I'd ask Dr. Rayly to go over the rules for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the Board of Supervisors welcomes public comment, and this is the opportunity to provide public comment on items that are not on this evening's public hearing agenda. So we welcome your comments. Any speaker interested in providing comments will have up to three minutes to speak today. In front of you, you have white lights that will turn green whenever you start, and then at the first yellow light, you'll have one minute left to speak, and then it'll start to blink at 30 seconds, saying that you have that time left, and then when it turns red, that tells us that your time is up. If we do have anybody here that would like to cede their time to a speaker, you'll have the opportunity to do that. Their time would be increased by two minutes for each person who chooses to do so for up to 10 minutes total. The Board has allowed at least one, an hour. Public comment is not intended to last more than one hour. We do ask any speakers to direct their comments to the Chair here this afternoon. And so, Mr. Chairman, that transition, happy to turn it over to you to see if we have anybody who wants to speak.
Okay, I'll now open the period for Citizen Comment.
Lynda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Manneken Sabbath. In front of you, you should have the history of, of Goochlin County zoning ordinances. Back in 2019, we had the opportunity to understand exactly what zoning ordinances were. It took roughly nine months of a organized way to understand exactly what was in all 32 articles. Mr. Spoonhour spent many, a evening to learn before he became a member of the Board, and so did a large number of my neighbors in District 4, who wanted to understand exactly what the zoning ordinances were. They got approved in November, and I gave you all the statistics, so I don't need to go over them. But since that time, we've had a lot of zoning ordinance amendments to add uses and to, into just share what the standards are for many of these uses. A lot of them may seem kind of nonchalant, like a small contractor's small storage unit and, you know, an energy storage facility. But those were added so that we could understand that when somebody wanted to, to use one of these uses, that, that it was, that we understood exactly what the standards were. Now we fast-forward to the TOD, and yet they're adding a lot of uses by right, but I don't see any standards for these uses. I'm kind of complexed with, with this because if they're allowed by right and there's no standards, then how do you deal with that? Like I said, good luck tonight. I'm, I'm going to go home early because I haven't been feeling well. I was in the hospital for quite a few days at the beginning of the month, and my doctor says that I don't need to be out till 11 o'clock at night, or whenever you all discharge. Thank you very much. Good luck tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I hope you get better. Would there be anyone else who would like to come forward and speak at this time? Items not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public comments period. Next, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The Legislative Delegation Meeting, September 12th, 10:00 a.m. Do I have them, do them both at the same time? And the regular meeting, October 7th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve these two sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next, we have several reports. Introducing new county staff, Mr. Heller.
Well, thanks again for having me up. We don't have a huge crowd today, but we have a very important introduction for today. Want to introduce our new, new to us, County Engineer, Austin Goine. Come on down, Austin. A photo of person's coming.
Next, we have a report from VDOT. I think we have a report.
And we have Mr. Mark Harlow, who's representing VDOT today.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Harlow.
How you guys doing? Dr. Rayly, members of the Board?
So Philip takes over and he just, you know, gets out of town?
Philip's in Vegas.
Oh, all right.
He's enjoying himself right now, so. My name is Mark Harlow again, and I'll be going over the report, you know, you guys today. Just a quick overview. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to see our road report. We've, our crew's been doing some pothole patching, drainage maintenance, ditching, pipe cleanouts, and replacements, and some shoulder work. We've also done some tree removal and tree pruning. We've completed all of our secondary mowing for the year. We're currently doing our fourth cycle of tractor mow on primary routes where we're picking up litter and picking up, cutting, cutting everything back well for the winter. Our area headquarters both just completed dry run inspections for snow. We had all of our equipment set up, loaded, ready to go for snow season, had an inspection from technicians come out and look over everything. All of our salt bins and sand bins are loaded and ready to go. So all of that just happened. The other thing I wanted to mention was we had 118 work orders. We did complete 105 last month. We had six after-hour call-outs that we were able to take care of. And the last thing I had was Mr. Lyle, Blair Road. You're listening. We, we have plans this month to get out on Blair Road and do some improvements out there, so just wanted you to be aware of that as well. All right, that's all I have. You guys got anything for me?
Question?
Yes.
Are there any plans for 250 and Shannon Hill 605? In the, like, or near future for?
Traffic engineering-type things?
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I've got some concerns about if you're coming from Louisa and you're at that stop sign, or even if you're leaving Goochlin and heading towards Louisa, that from the westbound side, there's that dip, and kind of cars can get missed.
Okay.
You know, if you're turning or crossing the intersection.
Yeah, no, I'll look into it and get back with you on that.
All right, thank you.
Yep. That's it.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir, and thanks for mowing my road. It's beautiful.
All right, thank you, guys.
Next, do we have someone from Chickahominy Health Department? Yeah.
Yeah, so Board members, so we have three presentations in a row here, and so this really kicks off the work that we're going to do as a staff to, to share some more information about work happening in our partner agencies and internally with our departments here in county government. So Dr. Frank and Emily Hines from the Chickahominy Health Department are going to kick it off, and then we're going to have Scott Foster, our Director of General Services, provide a report on the work that he and his team are doing, and then we're going to transition to a report from Tom Cock, our Director of Parks and Recreation. So grateful for their leadership and looking forward to hearing from you, Dr. Frank and your team, about the work you're doing to support our community.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rayly, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for having, having us before you. We appreciate the opportunity. Dr. Rayly encourages all departments to get up here two or three times a year, so we're thrilled to have that opportunity. We plan to be back two or three times a year. I am Tom Frank, the Health Director for Chickahominy Health District. I'm joined by two of my colleagues here. Got Emily Hines, who's our Population Health Planning and Improvement Coordinator, and Amelia Swafford, to my left here. She is our Community Health Coordinator. Today, I'm going to present just a really very quick overview of the Health Department, and, and then you're going to hear from Emily and from Amelia, who are going to give you an update on the 2025 to 2029 Goochlin County Community Health Improvement Plan, which is the much more important topic tonight. So very quickly, I'm going to, I don't know if you all have a screen in front of you there, but if you do, I wanted to share with you, let me go back here. So I want to describe to you Chickahominy Health District. What is a health district? Well, in Virginia, you might know Commonwealth of Virginia has a state-administered public health system. It's called the Virginia Department of Health. So we are one of thirty-five health districts throughout the Commonwealth. To learn a little bit more about us, you can go to our website. This is our front page of our website there. Our mission is very simple. It's our, it, really, it's our purpose for existence, and that is to improve the health of the community through preventing disease, promoting healthy lifestyles, and preventing, protecting people from environmental hazards and other hazards. And so it's, it's actually built right into our logo there, promote, prevent, and protect. That's what we're all about. Our funding sources come from various sources here. You can see we are a state-administered system, so fortunately, forty-two percent, the plurality of our funding, comes from state funds, and that's followed by county funds. Goochlin's generous enough to, to match some of those state funds, and so about a third of our funds come from the county. And then the rest comes from a combination of locally-generated revenues from fees, and then federal grants. About thirteen percent comes from federal grants. And we may, if there's time at the end, we'll get a little bit into that, since we are under a federal shutdown right now that has some effect on us as a local health district. I'm gonna just really quickly describe some of the program areas. These are some of the programs that we're responsible for. This is about, I think it's about sixteen. We have probably about twenty-six, thirty-six, depending on any particular year, major programs. These are just a few of them. A lot of people are, are familiar with environmental health, some of the things we do, restaurant inspections, approvals of septic systems and private water well systems. We inspect swimming pools. On the clinical side, we do have a medical clinic, and we do see patients. We're more or less a safety net provider for the community. We, we do immunizations. We are one of only four health districts that continue to do maternity care in our clinics. We have a clinician who's dedicated to maternity care. We have family planning. We treat infections. We have a WIC clinic. And importantly, we do rabies control. So every, every animal bite that animal control gets, gets word of, we consult with them, and we investigate every, every animal bite to determine whether there's any rabies involved. And so on the, on the animal side, our environmental health specialists get involved, and on the human side, if there's a human bite involved, our nurses get involved with that. And so, so, so those are some of the traditional public health things that we're responsible for. But probably more recently, we've been getting more and more involved with community health improvement. And so we actually have a community health improvement preparedness and response team. We're unique in that respect throughout Virginia Department of Health. We have epidemiology response team. We have emergency preparedness. But most importantly, in the last few years, we've added community health improvement, and their goal is to, is to work with the community, to develop community health assessments and community health improvement plans. And, and what you're going to hear today is, is going to focus on that area right there. So I'm going to turn it over to Emily and Amelia to take you through the rest here.
Good afternoon. My name's Emily. So the first step in improving community health is to complete a community health assessment, also known as a CHA. And the Chickahominy Health District facilitates this in partnership with the Goochlin Community Partners, which is a group of multi-sector partners, whether it be from faith-based communities, nonprofits, regional partners like Thrive Virginia, come together to kind of guide this process. So we've got our group together, and the community health assessment, for those not familiar, is just taking a look at the current health status. And we do this mostly through data collection, whether that's key informant interviews, focus groups. We actually held a community input session in this very room about a year ago. Elliot was really helpful with the technology. So we gathered all that data, and we asked our Goochlin Community Partners to help us identify the most pressing needs. So they helped us narrow it down to three priorities that we focused on in the improvement plan. So that's the next step. We put together a five-year plan that's really strategic. We put goals, objectives, and strategies in there, assigned responsible entities to really help move the needle and improve health outcomes. Our role at the Health District is to evaluate and monitor progress. We'll do that quarterly to hold everybody accountable and help out if they experience any roadblocks. So this is a cyclical cycle every five years.
So as we transition from the health assessment to the improvement planning process, the Goochlin Community Partners selected these three health priority areas, older adult support and services, mental health, and attainable and safe housing. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge all of the people who were involved in this process. Go ahead and look at the names and organizations that were involved. They were the heart of this work. Without them, it wouldn't have been possible. They helped us draft issue statements, which then guided the goals, strategies, and objectives that ended up in the improvement plan. The result of this hard work was a Goochlin Community Health Improvement Plan Report, which we adopted in August of this year. If you'd like to read it, you can scan a QR code up on the screen. Alternatively, I was very bold, and I put one-page summaries on the table out front. So if people want to read a shorter version, you're welcome to. Oh, goodness.
So I had the pleasure of facilitating the Older Adult Support and Services Work Group, which is about, you know, five or seven of us that came together to form just two goals. So the first one is centered around expanding support and services for the largest age demographic here in Goochlin County, improving healthcare access, access to home repairs, and transportation. We really want to ensure the conditions are in place for folks to age in place safely, with dignity, and choice. Our second goal is to develop and enhance community programs here in Goochlin that promote social engagement, you know, physical activity, and just overall well-being for those older adults, with the emphasis on cross-sector collaboration, because we can't do it alone. It takes all sorts of organizations coming together to make an impact.
I had the pleasure of facilitating the Mental Health Work Group. We came up with four goals. The first two are on the screen. Goal one is primarily about increasing access to mental health providers and services. As part of this initiative, I've been working with Mills Jones from Goochlin Human Services. We're figuring out what the resource gap should look like. We've met with county staff to see how it will fit onto the website, so it's available to the community. And then we've been connecting with partners just to see what resources they think we should have on there. Goal two is about strengthening partnerships, ideally, you know, improving referrals between agencies, so that people have access to the services that they need that are currently happening. These are the next two goals we came up with. The first is primarily about improving mental health awareness in the community. Goochlin Powhatan Community Services Board provides some really great trainings, question persuade respond, is a suicide prevention training, it's about an hour or two, very accessible. And then there's mental health first aid, which is a longer, more comprehensive training. And then Goal Six is about increasing social connectedness in the community. So that's a protective factor. The more social connections you have around you, the less likely you are to experience mental health concerns. There's some great things happening already in the county. The Span Center hosts friendship cafes, which connects older folks over lunch, so they're able to form new friendships and a bigger social network. And then there's also Ms. Rachel Tate with Goochlin High School. She connects local veterans with, yeah, she's, she's great. She connects local veterans with her eleventh grade history students. So these are the kinds of things that we want to highlight but also strengthen in the community. And then our third goal, attainable and safe housing. And what's central to this is reforming Housing GVA and its steering committee. Part of that is currently happening. We've met with Goochlin Department of Social Services, Goochlin Cares, and then Habitat for Humanity of Goochlin. We hope to reform the steering committee by the end of the year, and then reform the group as a whole to start meeting next summer. If anyone is interested in, you know, letting us know what housing needs there are in the county, please reach out. We'd love for you to join that initiative.
So our call to action is for y'all, including the community members in this room and beyond these walls, to read the 2025-2029 Goochlin County Community Health Improvement Plan or the one-page summary. Secondly, is to sign up for our electronic newsletter. This is all a part of that monitoring evaluation of the plan, so it doesn't collect dust on the shelf, you know, revisiting it. And it's just a short, less than four-minute read every three months, and that's the best way to stay up to date. And lastly, we're always welcoming more members to our Goochlin Community Partners meetings. We meet every other month online for about an hour. We're always open to sending you a meeting invitation. If you'd like that, you can email chdwellness@vdh.virginia.gov. Going to plug our website again. If you'd like to go on and review the community health assessment as well and the improvement plan, it'll be on there on the left-side panel. And here's the QR code to sign up for the e-newsletter. Take less than ten seconds. And I'd also like to plug the open house. We're going to have a week from today in this very building downstairs. We're going to have food, meet some very cool staff, and just discover more at Chickahominy. Dr. Frank?
So if there's time, I wanted to ask if there are any questions about the community health improvement plan first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for this report. I'm so glad that we're getting this information. It's extremely timely. Something jumped out. I mean, I had several other questions, but this one is probably more pressing and more, more exciting, actually. Mr. Lyle and I have had the opportunity through the organizations that we work with to work with GRTC. A couple of years ago, when I was looking to try to figure out how to solve some of the transportation issues that you have in a rural county, it came up that the, the organization, the Goochlin Partners, had worked on a similar study that identified transportation, especially getting seniors to doctor's appointments. So we're very excited that next year, we should see some progress in that area through GRTC, providing some funding. But we're, we are trying to influence how they set up the study. They set up the study looking at statistics and data, and if you see where they put and want to set it, it's probably where we least need it. So I reached out to Ms. Jefferson as my first point of contact, but we will be reaching out to you to help us inform in how to do this, potentially a pilot, to get potentially four to six roving vehicles throughout the county at an hour and a half. By the way, I was saying, if you call it in ninety minutes, you can get a ride at a really free or reduced cost, so very much looking forward to working with you guys on that.
Yeah, thanks. That's great input, and wanted to let you know, another great resource with, for us, has been Plan RVA, especially Ken Lance. He's been participating in just about every single one of our community health assessments and community health improvement plans for all four counties, actually. So Ken Lance has been wonderful there. Appreciate that. Any other questions about the improvement plan?
Mr. Chairman, a couple, if I may. And following up on Mr. Spoonhour, I am aware HIPAA sometimes precludes the sharing of information, and so I don't know if you're able to help us build, I guess I'll call it a needs map, where people are that need transportation to medical resources, if that's protected information or it can be shared, and that's rhetorical at this point, you don't need to answer. But I also was looking earlier, and how does an individual receive clinical services? I mean, what is the process? Is there, you just show up and say, "I'm sick, I need help," or is there a vetting process? How is that handled?
Yeah, they, they would, they would either contact us through email or, or front door or, or just phone call and ask to speak to a clinical person, and they'll get them set up.
And so they need to be in the Chickahominy district or Goochlin specific? And if they're?
Not necessarily, but we, we want to limit it to Goochlin, but, but we do have patients that cross borders all the time.
Well, that, that kind of touches on the question I was maybe obliquely reaching towards. Is there a citizenship requirement for someone to receive these services?
We don't, we don't ask for citizenship. We don't ask anybody coming in the door.
So that's a no?
To prove.
There is no requirement for citizenship on this?
That's true.
Okay.
Alright. And then I went ahead and put this last slide together at the request of Dr. Rayly and Josh Gillespie. Just because we're in the middle of a federal shutdown, I wanted to put, summarized everything in one slide as best as I could on how the federal shutdown potentially is affecting us at the local health department level there. And as you were, if you recall, our budget chart there, I mentioned that roughly thirteen percent of our budget at the Health Department comes from federal grant sources, and so those are the ones that are at risk due to the federal shutdown. And what I've done is outlined, I've given you that figure there. That's a rough figure of one hundred and sixty-one thousand for the year that is potentially affected. And, and those services that are affected are kind of outlined in orange or amber there, and the percentages of how much they are potentially affected are over in the percentages there on the right. And so you can see WIC, WIC is a hundred percent federal grant-funded program, and so that's potentially at risk, although we've, VDH has done a great job of, of maintaining funding for that program, and it's still going strong, and we haven't canceled any WIC appointments. We haven't furloughed any WIC staff either. So we've got a good plan in place for WIC. A portion of our immunization program is federally funded, and then a hundred percent of our local health emergency coordinator is funded through a federal grant. So that position, and then one of our two epidemiologists, or fifty percent, is funded through federal sources. So those are potentially at risk. But as I said, Virginia Department of Health is doing a fantastic job of keeping our doors open and keeping us operational at a hundred percent. And so we, we've got a plan in place. We have a contingency plan in place, Plan B plan, backup plan, and we haven't even tapped into that yet at the state level, so we're, we're in pretty good shape. Any questions about that?
Through previous shutdowns, do you guys, does your budget normally come back to whole? Once the government?
When there's been a, when there's been a significant federal shutdown in the past, my understanding is that when the feds finally approve the continuing resolution, and that funding comes back and is approved, that funding is sent to the states, so it does get replaced. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
So in other words, it's retroactive?
It's, it's retroactive, that's right.
So let's hope it's temporary and doesn't impact us too severely.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Is the state funding amount consistent across health districts, or is it dependent on the prosperity levels? Is that the right term? Yeah, similar schools.
That's a great question. It's, it's relatively consistent, but there are significant changes in that pie there, that proportion that you see there in front of you can change significantly depending on the county itself or the city. There's, there's a thing called the Cooperative Budget Match. It's a, it's a local match built into the code. And so some counties, like Goochlin and Hanover, and now even Charles City and New Kent, match at forty-five percent compared to the state's fifty-five percent. But there are other cities and counties that match, let's say, at thirty percent versus seventy percent. And Charles City used to be in that category, where they were matched at less than thirty percent. Now they're, they've been bumped up to forty-five percent just a couple of years ago. So it, it does depend on the locality, and it's, it's, it's all calculated through a J-LARK formula that it's, it's going to be revisited every couple of years, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So next, I'm going to ask our Director of General Services, Mr. Scott Foster, to come forward and tell us a little bit about the breadth and depth of the work that he and his team are doing. He has some really good data to share, and as well as some things that he's doing to track performance amongst his team, so excited to be able to share this information with you all today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Foster. I have the pleasure of serving as Director of General Services. I thought I would start out with some of the areas of responsibility. Our two biggest is facilities management and convenience centers. Also, we handle project management, security card and key access, fuel management, vehicle replacements for non-public safety, renovations, street signs, poll banners, and voting machine delivery and pickup. The picture you see here is a program we started this year. Very proud of the banner program. We were fortunate enough, we were able to put sixty-three hometown heroes up on display, so great program. And we're responsible, facilities management's responsible for the maintenance of all county-owned facilities totaling over two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand square foot. IFMA, which is the International Facilities Management Association, per tech is fifty-thousand is the standard. We're currently at about a hundred and five-two. We do this to ensure that facility-related needs of Goochlin citizens, employees, tenants, and visitors are met. We strive to provide a clean and safe environment in all general government facilities utilizing best management practices. We respond to over two-hundred-and-nineteen work tickets each month. FM strives for a three-hour max for emergency work orders and a five-day turnaround on regular work orders. How do we keep up with that? How do we maintain those numbers? We used a cloud-based software designed specifically for facilities, man- We strive to provide a clean and safe environment in all general government facilities utilizing best management practices. We respond to over 219 work tickets each month. FM strives for a three-hour max for emergency work orders and a five-day turnaround on regular work orders. How do we keep up with that? How do we maintain those numbers? We used a cloud-based software designed specifically for facilities management. It's called Corigo. This is my dashboard right here. You see the metrics. This is a customizable dashboard, and this is what I look at every day. Anything you see on there, I can drill down into and get instant information. If any emergency shows up, that'll pop up red, so it alerts me. And also, the system sends out emails for emergencies, and it gets overdue, it'll send out an email. Some key projects we're working on right now, community development renovation, the camera and security upgrades in the administration, public safety renovation, courthouse directional signage, that's both vehicle signage and pedestrian signage that we just recently wrapped up. We're getting ready to start the cleanup of the signs in the right of way. We're working on a vehicle maintenance standard operation procedures. We do not have that in place currently. And we're also developing a safety and risk program. Jumping over to convenience centers, I'm sure you're all aware, we operate two convenience centers, the Western Convenience Center and the Central Convenience Center. We operate those in a clean, safe environment for our citizens, so they can bring their household waste, their yard debris. They can also bring a variety of recyclable items there and drop off. The convenience center also supports local neighborhoods when they do cleanups. We drop off supplies for the cleanup. We'll go on a Friday typically, they'll clean up on the weekend, we'll go back Monday, we'll pick up all the bags, and we'll pick up the supplies, the bags, the pickers that we lent them. The convenience centers also host several community events annually. Dr. Rayly already spoke to the tire amnesty. I'm very excited about that, that we're able to do ag tires again this year and document shredding. Some did you know for the convenience centers. Central Convenience Center receives over 21,500 visitors monthly. Western receives over 7,500 monthly. Central Convenience Center processes over 450 tons of municipal solid waste every month, while Western processes 194. The state of Virginia requires the region we're in to recycle at least 25% of the solid waste each year by pounds. In 2024, we partnered with the Central Virginia Waste Management Association, and we able to reach 58.6% recycled. And one last did you know is curbside recycling currently has 2,277 homes participating in that program. So some outlook for general services. We have some aging county infrastructure, and we're getting some new county facilities, and that will certainly put a strain on the facilities management resources. And the increase in demand for the central convenience site and the very limited space for growth there is going to be a real challenge in the future, how we handle that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So thank you so much.
Yep.
I should have known something was going on when I saw you in a tie.
[laughing]
So next time, polo shirts are fine.
I had to dig deep in the closet, Mr. Spoonhour.
So this is phenomenal. Jeremy kicked me under the table when your dashboard came up, because I've been asking for dashboards for three years now. So this is, you're setting the bar high for everybody. I just want to kind of say, I just want to say thank you. You know, we do the, we're not a flashy county. I would say our facilities are modestly elegant. When you walk in this building, it shines. When you go to our parks, when you see our, even the way the banners are hung, it's just excellence all around. And I know I hear from our citizens, especially at the convenience centers, how well they're taken care of. And I just want to thank you and your team for that. And I'm so glad to see these numbers. And what I'm really glad about is that you, at the end, you made an ask, because so often these things come into dog and pony shows, and we don't really, as a board, know what the true needs are. So A, good job going first for internal groups, and B, good job asking for stuff, because it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour. And it's a team effort. I have a tremendous staff, top to bottom. They all have a heart to serve, and they love this county. So the credit goes to them.
Great job.
Thank you.
Is your responsibility to clean up all these political signs and everything as well?
Yes, if it's in the right of way, yes, sir.
So they put them out, and then we have to clean them up?
Correct.
That's not fair. Anyway, that's the way it goes.
Yeah, we will be re-advertising that effort next week for the public, so that they're aware of our process. And we're going to make phone calls for those that are currently in the right of way and give folks a chance to come and get their signs. And ultimately, we'll start to pick them up the week of the 17th. So some more information coming to our community next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you recognizing that the eastern part of the county does not have a convenience center. And if you want to have a lightning rod, just talk about putting a convenience center close to any neighborhood. But is there something that we can be doing so far as community engagement, finding out? Just how do we move that process forward? Because it is something I hear with, it's not a daily or even weekly, but I hear it frequently. I have to drive all the way to the courthouse area with my recycling. And if there are things that we can do, please consider me a resource, and I will engage with the HOAs and the other folks that are out there. And I don't know what questions you would like to be asked, and so here's your, my ask is, coach me, and I will do the best I can.
I will take you up on that offer, Mr. Lyle. I'll get with you with some questions.
And I cannot, as a Farm Bureau Director, cannot go without saying thank you. I know that was a little bit of prodding to get our partners to accept agriculture tires again this year. And now that they've done it twice, I'm looking forward to doing it three years in a row.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Spoonhour, I just want to add, do you, since you're data-driven, one thing I would ask is, I see your point relating to aging county infrastructure loud and clear. Could you, as we go looking at the courthouse plan, the development of that building and other structures, could you make sure that, whether it be, you know, you ensure that you're contacted, so we think of those elements and potential savings we're getting, also potential needs we're not looking at throughout those processes? Because I think that is one area of budgets that we could probably be better fine-tuned on, especially as we have some structures that are 40, 50, 60 years old. And I think sometimes we think new structures, no maintenance, but new technology creates new problems sometimes, so.
Yes, sir. We do have, from the 2018 space study, a complete inventory of the condition of all of our facilities. We didn't upgrade that this time, because I can do math. It was 2018. Seven years later, I can figure out, seven years older. But the current space study is looking at the reutilization of some of the buildings down there that will be potentially vacated. So that is being considered, and I am highly involved in that. Dr. Rayly's highly involved, Mr. Gillespie's highly involved, so it's being looked at pretty heavily.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour.
Yep. Thank you.
I will say, I'm also aware that you repair leaky roofs. Scott Spoonhour, he was giving me a tour of the old Goochlin Elementary, and we got on the second floor, and we discovered a leak. So he made a phone call right there on the spot and got somebody on it.
We took care of it. It's been repaired, yes, sir.
Yep, good job.
Thank you all.
All right. Next, we're going to bring Tom Cock, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to share the work that his team is doing.
Good afternoon, Board. Mr. Chair, Dr. Rayly. Before I start, I just want to jump in and make a comment that in Parks and Recreation, there's a lot of fun things that happen. And one of those, to the comment Mr. Spoonhour made about Scott this evening, is I was attempting to put on my tie in the rec center, and a young man, I won't use his name, but he came in to use the facility, and he looked at me and said, "That button's not going to go." So I've outgrown the shirt I'm wearing. I've learned that this evening. So kudos to you, Scott. And I failed at that this evening, but he's a funny guy, and we play horse sometimes, so. My name is Tom Cock. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for Goochlin County, and I too appreciate the opportunity to bring my department here before the Board and share a quick peek inside of what we've done over the past few months or quarter. And I'm happy to take some questions at the end. But one thing I've been doing pretty frequently with a lot of the public meetings we've had is ask people, encourage them, to scan the QR code. That takes you to our Linktree. That's a one-stop shop for a lot of information about our department. For a plug, you can contribute information to the master plan and provide some feedback as a community member, but you can also find information like upcoming special events, our facility gym schedule, links to our website, links to some external organizations that run programs in the county. It's a good way for us to obviously connect folks to what we do. You know, I appreciate Dr. Rayly earlier, starting off with a Parks and Rec did you know, and I wanted to share a few of this in my presentation this afternoon. So did you know that we had 4,967 views of real-time parking lot updates? That was the parking lot mechanism. We stood up on the website for fireworks, so people knew which lots were full and where to head. That was new for us this year, and it was pretty successful and worked well. It also informed public safety of which lots were filling. Did you know that now Goochlin Parks and Rec has not one but two certified playground inspectors on staff? Both of those certifications have come within the past about a year and a half. Joe Rosanna, who's here with me tonight, our facility manager, and Bob Page, our facilities coordinator, that helps us keep our facilities safe and operational. Did you know that the grounds crew volunteered hours very recently and proudly to renovate the Goochlin Recreation Ball Field? There was a game played this past weekend against the county and the schools. I wasn't there, but I've heard great things about it, and I look forward to playing next year. And Carl is here in the audience. His team did the work. And did you know that 100% of respondents of the community survey said that our parks are well-maintained? That was part of the statistically valid survey we did. And did you know that Goochlin Parks and Rec received a national association, an award, a National Association of County Parks and Recreation Officials Class One Award for the county versus county kickball game that we did not too long ago? So looking back in time from July, from just July to October, looking at some of the special events we've operated, we had a little over 6,000 attendees for fireworks. Our summer concert series saw some great attendance summers for each of those months. Ag Fair had 1,740 attendees, and Fall Festival had about 2,500 attendees. Ag Fair and Fall Festival have both seen an increase over the past few years. And for Ag Fair specifically, we have shifted that event and Fall Festival to the Old Elementary School Track and Field, which is a bigger venue. And obviously, you can see the picture at the bottom, we do a good job of filling up any space that were given. And then we also participated in Goochlin Palatine Community Services Hope Fest and the VA 250 Annual 5K Race at Elk Hill. We helped the VA 250 Commission operate that, which Mr. Lyle participated in, and I think brought home a medal. So in the program realm, from July to October, our senior programs, which if you remember is a relatively new initiative for us, that's been growing over previous months. We have about 30 members that are pretty continual in that program. The top programs being Tai Chi, which happens weekly, cheer pickleball, which happens about monthly, and day trips, which are either month or every other month. And those are the participation numbers we see for those. This current year's rec zone, which is our after-school program, has also seen an increase in numbers. We're averaging 25 at Randolph, 45 at the new Goochlin Elementary School, and 25 at Byrd on a daily basis. But total, we have 101 unique registered participants. And our program allows parents and children to kind of selectively come in and out on days that are needed, but the total pot is 101. Our previous, meaning last year's summer camp, saw 177 unique participants. That's an increase from the previous year, and we do anticipate this year's upcoming summer camp to grow as well. And then when we talk about facility use from July to October, so this, we refer to this as reservations. So we had 517 athletic field individual reservations, 651 indoor facility reservations, and those are only at Central High School, 174 gym reservations, and that's obviously a combination between the gym we have at the Goochlin Sports Complex and the one at Central High School, and then 34 pavilion reservations at Leaks Mill and Hidden Rock Park for July and October, sorry, July through October. We also have traffic counters that are strategically placed in our facilities, so we can have a good gauge of visitations that happen at those outdoor facilities. Those are the numbers there. But total, we had 50,426 visitors, which is only from July to September, and that's because we were still going out to get traffic counters before this presentation. So that number will obviously increase. We see a larger fluctuation in the warmer months than we do in the off-season and the winter. The farmer's market, so this was our first year as Parks and Rec Department operated the farmer's market for those 22 weeks made of September. We had a little over 6,000 visitors and 30 vendors that participated in that. I want to take a brief moment to thank our sponsors for this year's market, which was the Farm Bureau, Renewal by Anderson, Advertising Connections, and Smallwood Renovations. Look forward to that market coming around next year, which, as a reminder, that operates on Tuesdays from 4:00 to 6:30, right across the street at the farmer's market lot. The concession stand trailer, I want to make sure I had an opportunity to slow down and provide an update about that. So the trailer has completed all the VDH permitting inspections needed. We actually have two of our Parks and Rec staff that have done some training and specifically completed their food manager certifications through ServSafe. And then thanks to Scott and his team, we have recently completed the facility docking station. That is a concrete pad, shoreline power, potable and non-potable water, and a gray water disposal line, so we properly dispose of the gray water, which is a requirement. So looking to the future, upcoming events on November 8th, which is this weekend, we have Kame, which is a Comic-Con-style event that'll be here at the Goochlin Sports Complex from 9:00 till 4:00. On November 15th, we're going to, it's our first turkey, Tucker Turkey Trot, I always get them mixed up, two-miler race that'll happen at Tucker Park at 9:00 AM. On November 22nd, we have our second annual holiday market. That event actually supports the Goochlin Christmas Mother here at the Goochlin Sports Complex from 9:00 to 1:00. And on December 5th, we'll do our annual holiday tree lighting. And this year, we have our new tree, and we're looking forward to putting that on display, and we encourage people to come out and look at that. That'll be at Napa Field or the Fairgrounds, which is the property located next to the Fairgrounds Road Roundabout, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. As an update for the Virginia Department of Forestry Grant, we have already installed some new seating at the Hidden Rock Dog Park. We've purchased and installed 16 new picnic tables at both of the pavilions at Hidden Rock Park, 19 trash cans at Leaks Mill, Hidden Rock, and the farmer's market. We're in progress of adding the additional pet waste stations at Leaks Mill, Matthews, Tucker, and Central High School, additional baskets for the disc golf course, which we've been doing a lot of work to renovate that and make it larger. We started with nine holes, and we're moving to 18 baskets. Three new boot brush stations at Leaks Mill Park, Matthews Park, and Tucker. We're going to replace five grills at Hidden Rock Park and Tucker Park, two new mountain bike workstations at Leaks Mill Park, and some new informative signage at a number of our spaces. As an update for the master plan and that project and how it's been going, on December 2nd, I'll be returning here to provide an update to you all specifically about the master plan, because that'll take just a little bit of time. Also in December, we're going to work to start scheduling some one-on-one time with you all, each of the board members, and kind of slow down and make sure that we're having an opportunity to explain things to you, make sure the expectations are matching up, and kind of give you an update of all the work we've been, you know, been doing over these past couple of months. And on December 18th, we'll provide a update to the planning commission on the project. And then as we get into January, we will do another Community Connect event, which is a town hall-style meeting we've been doing throughout the project to help educate the public and give them an opportunity to provide some feedback. And then we will also in January start to bring a final draft of plan, two, two-by-twos for review. And then on January 20th, that would be the Recreation Advisory Committee meeting in January. We will present that to the Recreation Advisory Commission for adoption and a vote, and then hopefully bring it on February 3rd to you all to bring it home, come around their base and slide to home, and hopefully have a vote for adoption. And with that, I am happy to field any questions.
Mr. Cock?
Yes.
Yes. I see a lot of small engines in the various equipment that we own. Do you have any connectivity with our CTE program on, you know, how that can be involved in our training and various things?
Yeah, fantastic question. And I'll expand a little bit on my answer. Recently, we've had a few meetings with the CTE program, both on like some facility projects and things that are happening close to where they are at GSE. And we actually have lined up a number of opportunities and projects to work with the students. One, to build things there that then can be transported, like to the parks, whether it's new archery stands, picnic tables, birdhouses, bat houses, all kinds of stuff. And then when it comes to things like maybe refurbishing a shed or demolishing something, all the instructors there, all the instructors for CTE and Mr. Bruce Watson are all on board with that. When it comes to some of the small engine repair or tractor repair that we have, right now, actually Carl and his team actually do most of the work in-house, but Carl and his team were there as well, and they started to bridge that gap a little bit with some of the smaller things we could bring to them to work on. But I mean, the short answer, I'm sorry, the short answer is yes, we've had some communication with them to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyle, I'm sure you're going to do the turkey trot?
I'm actually doing Richmond Road Runner's Turkey Trot, which is a 10K.
Okay, very good.
I've got, it's historic with me.
Mr. Lyle is our runner on the board.
Yeah, anybody want coffee? I do have some questions, Mr. Chairman. I noticed, and it's great that we have I noticed, and it's great that we have playground safety, I fell on my head several times from the monkey bars, and that may explain a lot, but do we ever make that service available, say, to some of the churches or what we might call private out there? And the counselor next to me is kind of murmuring under her.
Yeah. I would, I would definitely be walking straight into Tara's office to have that discussion. I will say, from the school's perspective, that is probably something where we would have a conversation about helping out. I can't, I'm not gonna publicly say anything about that quite yet, because that would go to county administration and definitely our legal folks before that.
All right. You can stop there. I mean, I got my answer, okay? You mentioned also the after-school work, and you referred to them as camps. Are there scholarships available for those?
Yes, sir. So, we have two forms of scholarships for any of our youth programs, doesn't matter what the program is. One is operated through the Department of Social Services, where they're, you know, obviously, social services are vetting individuals, and they have funding that they provide to us to cover the cost, and there are, you know, caps and things like that. And then, we internally have one that is basically up to a certain amount per year per child, and our funding for that is pretty minimal, because mostly it's a kind of a catch-all for anything that slips through social services that they may not, they may not meet the qualifications, but since I've been here, we haven't used that.
Okay.
But yes, we do.
And I know that the Goochland Education Foundation has started their own, I'm gonna call it enrichment program. Have you found that that has diminished participation with your programs or?
No. Our, from last year to this year, our numbers have gone up in our after-school program.
All right. Good. The Farmer's Market in Centerville used to be, and it was on private property, I believe this one here is on county property.
Yes.
And living in eastern Goochland, I noticed that we were getting a lot of Henrico sales tax dollars from that. Is there an opportunity to explore the Farmer's Market reappearing in the Centerville area?
I, I think there is an opportunity to do that, and you are correct that that was one of the reasons why we, A, us taking over and learning how to do it, and shrinking down to county-owned property. We didn't really push too far with the other market, the eastern market being on private property, but I do think there's an opportunity to expand what we've got going on, our market, and whether that's different days of the week or multiple locations. I think that's something we're definitely interested in doing. We just need to start the thought process of how the best way is to do it.
All right. And I noticed you used air, well, actually, written quotes for the Christmas tree, and you called it Napa Field. And right now, it's, I think Federated Auto Parts, but it's still called Napa Field. For several months, I know the Farm Bureau has been interested in having a conversation and having it called Farm Bureau Field. And I don't know that Napa is paying any sponsorships, so this would be, I mean, quite frankly, an opportunity to generate minimal revenue and just rebrand that rascal Farm Bureau. How do we keep that conver, how do we get it going more robustly?
Yeah. That conversation is, is happening. And actually, with Josh Gillespie and Dr. Rayleigh about naming rights and developing proper policies, writing that up the food chain through county administration to develop that. And it is honestly perfect timing, because as we start to work with you all to really focus down on the Parks and Rec master plan, what our facilities become, how they evolve, what kind of improvements we can make there, I think it will not only be obviously something exciting for the community and local businesses, but it'll give them opportunity to, well, A, get the tool first, but then give them opportunity to do that. And I think you're hitting a nail on the head, sir.
Yeah. Another opportunity is what we call the Field where the Ag Fair was. Do we want to continue to call that old GES Field, or is there another opportunity to provide a better name to that?
Right.
There's a bona fide, and Farm Bureau has with the schools sponsored signage at the athletic fields.
Yes, sir.
And the last thing, I guess I'd be interested in, and I have not seen it, but do we have vandalism issues? I mean, are people tagging or just deciding that that frisbee basket really needs to be horizontal, not vertical? I mean, do we have issues like that?
So, last month was two years that I've been here, and it is very minimum, if any at all. And I actually think that's, that speaks to our sheriff's office and our folks that are out, they are in our spaces. You know, you can drive by Leaks Mill Park or something like that, and they're frequently in those areas. And I also kind of attest that to the broken window theory, which is if things look good and you do a good job maintaining them, they don't really attract those type of nuisances. If you let things degrade and fall, I used to teach a class, I'm, I'm kind of giving my spiel here, but the broken window theory also plays a role in that. So, we do a good job maintaining our spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Spooner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, again, kudos, love seeing this. One of the things that I want to call out as a huge positive is, I've been to, I've been doing this for several years now, and I've been to a lot of these events year after year. I can't think of any event that hasn't improved the next year. And a lot of times, when you're busy and we keep you right-staffed, we'll call, so there's not a lot of wiggle room, it's very simple to fall back into old habits and to just, hey, it's how we did it last year. But I, just even moving the fields, I don't know what drove that. I'm gonna say it was a look for continuous improvement and growth. So, I just wanted to congratulate you and your team for continuing to look how to evolve, how to make these better each time, and they're already really, really good, to great, so I keep, keep doing that. In regards to this, maybe we'll see it more in the master plan. And I was just, just from a, hey, how do you iterate to great for us to help you, two things come to mind. You know, you, you mentioned the Farmer's Market, and that was a little bit of a hot button for me. You know, I'd like to see more data. You know, if you think about how, and I don't want to take this on a negative tilt, but hopefully just in a spirit of, you know, us getting excellent, you know, if I think about it, you had a private entity that was running it.
Sir.
That was trying to get, didn't want to do it anymore. The businessman says to me, well, if it was such a good idea and it was making so much money, that somebody'd be jumping at the opportunity, but it didn't, so we picked it up. So, I hope at some point around budget season or in the master plan that we see, was this profitable to the county, or did we break even? You know, I think the previous board, that was a huge expectation, that we tried for our programs to get to a break even with however we need to do that. And then, the same feedback I gave Mr. Foster, which is, we can't help you if we don't know what you need. So, in these presentations, let us know what's in your way, what can we help with, and I think, you know, if it's promoting different things, however, that's what we want to do.
Yep.
But I thank you guys for everything you do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
Additional question. As I think through sports that Goochland, that come more naturally to Goochland, I think of hunting and fishing and cycling. The challenge with those, those are largely individual, but has Parks and Rec talked about ways in which they can generate greater outreach from the county in things such as process, I mean, I don't know, processing and, you know, encouraging those sports to thrive and grow, even though they might not, unlike a team sport, where there's more natural community opportunities?
Yeah. And I appreciate the question. One of the responses that made it, I'm not gonna, I think it's top five, but it's definitely top seven, was kind of the hunting, fishing category, some of the outdoor adventure-style programs or opportunities to recreate. And we, we Parks and Rec right now don't really focus on some of those, aside as mountain biking, nine miles of mountain bike trails are beautiful, you know, that kind of thing. But that's actually one of the things that is a mechanism of the master plan, is to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. Are we focusing on something that actually isn't a top priority of the community? And how can we shift gears to maybe either add that program into our arsenal or, you know, go lower on one thing and higher on the other? And I think, I think some of your answers are found in that process we're working through that we'll be meeting with you all to talk about. And then, the other thing I would mention is, we have a lot of great community groups. I mean, you know, sports-related, GYAs, GUSA Theater Group, and, you know, we do everything we can to make sure that they're still thriving and helping them with, you know, just some knowledge-based resources, you know, things like that. And if they do the jobs well, and which they do, then that doesn't fall back on the county so much to your question about the Farmer's Market. You know, if there was someone that stepped in, we would say, we'll help you, you know, take over and give you some resources in terms of our knowledge and, but, but I think the master plan will help wash out some of those questions that you have asked.
Well, I also think some of the sports where we actually can differentiate ourselves.
Yes.
Allow us to speak to regional cooperation, because I do know with cycling, people drive out to Mannequin Road.
Yeah.
And, you know, Henrico residents and Hanover residents, and they're coming to Goochland on a regular basis. It'd be nice to, you know, be able to tell our fellow counties, yeah, we're helping you out too.
Yes, sir. Yep. You're right.
Well, Tom, thank you for your leadership, but I tell you, my kudos, in addition to you, have to go to your staff.
Absolutely.
You know, when I see them out there creating wonderful recreational opportunities for our folks, I see them happy doing it. You know, this, they're having fun, but they're getting, they're getting the work done, and they're doing a great job, so.
Yep, just like Mr. Foster. I have a great team.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we have, this, we have various other reports in our packet. The AP October report, you all have seen that. Planning and development activity reports in the packet. Bird band report, agricultural summary. Are there any reports from the board? I guess we need a motion on that. Oh, excuse me.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to talk about a quick observation that I had at Plan RVA. So, Plan RVA, for those of you who aren't aware, is our regional planning organization that Goochland is a part of with eight other jurisdictions. And one of the benefits of this, other than just support, is you get to hang out with eight other supervisors and leaders from different counties, and we all do something a little differently. Well, in this past finance and audit, I sit on both the finance and audit committees for both CVTA and Plan RVA, and we did something different. We had our, we had our, what do you call it? Our audit report was done, so our auditors came in and spoke. And our chairman of the finance committee, Mr. Davis from Hanover County, he set up a closed session in, during that time, so that the finance committee had a chance to publicly get presented with the audit and finance, and then go into a closed session to talk about how the interaction with the team went, how the interaction with the auditors went, and different things they saw. And I wanted to bring that up as potentially a recommendation to you, Mr. Chairman of the Finance and Audit Committee. It was maybe something we want to consider, and I think, I spoke with Mr. Davis afterwards, and he said it's something that he does on each board that he's in, and it opens a great dialogue to be able to speak and have a good conversation with the staff. Not that we're keeping stuff from anybody, but just being able to have that conversation. So, that's all I wanted to bring up. And again, to just stress, you know, sometimes you drive an hour and a half for an hour meeting, but it can be worth it.
Yes. Thank you. Anything, any other reports?
Mr. Chairman, I will just mention in passing that the RTPO did lose a valued member, Mr. I just went.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, he did. Passed, and he, he was chairman when I first joined. He was very kind in mentoring. He was an Army veteran, so of course, we'd expect that from him. But he, he added a lot, he kept things moving, and we will miss him, and I just wanted to mention that we did lose that.
Great, great, great man. Great. Yep. And now, I'll ask Dr. Rayleigh to give a brief review of the consent agenda.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, you do have one item on the consent agenda today for your consideration. That is the approval of your FY 2027 budget calendar. And for the benefit of the public who's watching online or in the audience today, there are a couple minor modifications to the proposed budget calendar from what, you know, maybe the board has experienced in the past, and I really want to make sure that we're working hard to provide you with all the information you need to make an informed decision on your future spending plan, because ultimately, you know, the budget that you create and that spending plan is aligned with the priorities that we have as an organization. We had the opportunity to talk a little bit in September about some capital improvement needs. You heard of some of those today. There'll be more conversations about the needs that we have from a facility standpoint moving forward. And so, we have slated, then December 8th, a follow-up conversation to that September CIP conversation, and then some, some work sessions on the front end publicly of the budget related to what we want to do in the future. And, you know, that's in anticipation of my presentation to you, so it gives us an opportunity to work together in a work session format to ensure that my presentation to you on February 17th is aligned with your goals and priorities as we head into that budget. And then, we have some opportunities to have some work with the school board and a public hearing, and then you're slated for the approval of your budget on May 5th. That's a little bit after you would set the tax rate, so you see a little bit of change there. Previously, board members, you approved your budget and set the tax rates at the same time, but setting the tax rates on April 14th allows us to get the bills out in time, and so we understand what our revenue stream's gonna look like, but also allows you to make some fine-tuning adjustments between April 14th and May 5th. There are some things that you maybe want to do from a personnel standpoint or any other last-second adjustments that you may want to make from a competitive standpoint. So, some minor adjustments, but by and large, it follows the past practice you've had in developing your budgets. Seeking your approval today.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve as amended, consent agenda item one presented.
Second.
I didn't hear an amendment.
Sorry, it didn't get.
My apologies.
Bracketed. No, that's fine.
Yep. So, it's a.
Like Ron Burgundy, you have to print it right. No, Mr. Chair, I move that the board consent agenda, the board approve consent agenda item one as presented. Thank you.
Second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's a great agenda.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Mr. Jim Yatzick and his colleague Ryan Waldrop to join us up front here today. Board members, last month, when we were together, you heard a presentation on the needs assessment from the group who has been doing that work. And so, we now have a baseline needs based on all of that work that has been done over the course of the past several months. Last spring, there was conversation that happened in our community regarding the procurement of how we want to move forward with the future construction of the courthouse in our community. And so, I've asked Mr. Yatzick and Mr. Waldrop to be here today, who represent the firm of MBP McDonough Bull Yard and Peck. And so, they did the initial analysis for us as a county last spring to determine whether or not our courthouse project would qualify for alternative procurement, and there are multiple ways to do that. And so, as we move this work forward and think about the next steps for us in, in the future, I wanted to get some information publicly available and have some conversation amongst you today to answer any questions that you may have of Mr. Yatzick, who's an industry expert in this field. So, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rayleigh. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be here with you this afternoon. Jim Yatzick with MBP, Vice President with the company, Service Line Manager on the building side. MBP does project management, owner representation. One of our most recent projects was right here in Goochland. We worked on Goochland Elementary School. Ryan Waldrop, my colleague there, led up our onsite services on there. We're very happy with the, the way that project turned out, and hopefully the community is happy with the, the use of their new elementary school. But do you want to talk this evening a little bit about project delivery methods? My, my background really is in local government construction, done a lot of K through 12, but also worked a lot of municipal government side, police stations, fire stations, city halls, those type of projects. And in doing so, have also worked on just about every type of delivery method in terms of design, bid, build, and CM at risk and design-build. So, that's really what I'm gonna speak a little bit about this afternoon, and in terms of, as Dr. Rayleigh said, in terms of your, your upcoming courthouse and what options you may have for, for project delivery. So, just gonna start high-level textbook, textbook definition of project delivery, design as satisfactory, complete a construction project from conception to occupancy, chosen method determines how stakeholders typically, owners, designers, builders will collaborate to meet their obligations. So, the non-textbook answer really is, is any, any project that you do, you're gonna So the non-textbook answer really is any project that you do, you're going to have a designer, and you're going to have a construction contractor. And project delivery is really how you go about setting up your contract with those entities, how early you're going to bring your contractor in. That really speaks to the different project delivery methods that you have. So the three main ones that are available for you in Virginia, there's a couple others, but they're not used in Virginia, so I'm not going to mention them. But the three main ones really are design bid build, construction management at risk. You'll hear that referred to as CMAR or design build, DB. And design build really has two subsets to it. There's really the more traditional design build, which is one of the options that you have under Virginia procurement. And then there's also PPEA. That stands for Public Private Educational and Infrastructure Act. That's another way about going to about project delivery, and that delivery is really a design build type of delivery, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of those nuances. But I'm just going to do a high level overview of each of the delivery methods and talk about some advantages, disadvantages of each one, and then a couple project examples with a CM at risk project that we worked on in Charlottesville and a PPEA project that we worked on in Williamsburg. And then I'll finally want to kind of close talking a little bit about the work that we did looking at your courthouse project. So, so design bid build, that's kind of the traditional procurement method. I think everyone who's worked any kind of public government construction, that's the most typical method. That's the one where you hire an architect first, the architect designs your facility to 100%. You put that out for bids and generally have to go with whoever the low bidder is, the lowest kind of qualified bid. So that's often referred to as low bid as well. Advantages, disadvantages, it's widely used, so everyone who's worked in public construction, all the contractors, designers, understand it very well. Most common form for public procurement in Virginia. In this delivery method, the architect is working directly for you as the owner, so you have really full control over what the architect does. You express what you want the project to be, they react. This method is also very good for competition. You're putting the project out on the street, and everyone kind of has a level playing field and is able to bid on the project, and that competition has a tendency to help drive prices down, which is a good thing for everybody. On the disadvantages side, this is one, again, anyone who's worked on design bid build and done it long enough has encountered what I call the bid day surprise. You get through the design phase, everyone's happy with design, it's exactly what you want, and sometimes even for reasons outside of your control, it might just not be a very good market. You put the project out for bid, and you are surprised, your project's 20% overbid, over budget, and that's a big issue. You have to step back, a redesign, might even have to pay an architect to do redesign, could bring projects to a screeching halt, and in some cases, this can even cancel a project if the project itself is out of line enough with the budget. It's also a slower method. You're designing it, and then you're essentially just stopping all that progress, you're putting it out to bid. So it's going to tend to have a longer timeframe. Owner, you as the owner, you have an architect who's designing it for you. If the architect has design issues, you generally have to pay the contractor to fix those. You might be able to go to the architect and talk to them about mistakes they made, but you still have to pay a contractor to fix those mistakes. The biggest disadvantage to me for this system is that you don't have a contractor involved early in the project. You don't have them involved until design is 100% completed, which is fine for some projects. Some projects are very simple and straightforward. More complex projects, that can be a real detractor to not have that contractor expertise involved early on. So that'll kind of lead into the discussion with some of the other delivery methods out there. There's a flip side to that competition that I felt, this is just one of the things I kind of formed as an opinion. You're putting all this pressure on people to compete and come with the lowest price. That has a disadvantage. So to come up with the lowest price, a lot of times you are putting the bare minimum amount of management supervision on the trade contractors to get that low price. So that really works as a disadvantage. It can take away from the quality. You might get a better price, but there's a sacrifice of quality. So that's one of the things that we feel is, comes from that design bid build delivery. And all this can lead, there is some higher potential for adversarial relationships because of some of those factors I mentioned. And in Virginia, you can't pre-qualify these contractors, but it's really a pass fail. There's not a higher level of quality than for one contract and another. If they pass a minimum threshold, they are qualified, and then you essentially have to accept their bid if they're the low bidder. So moving on to the construction management at risk, the diagram there is exactly the same as the design bid build. You as an owner, as the county, would have a contract with the designer. You'd have a separate contract with the contractor, the CM at risk. The key difference here is that that CM at risk is brought in early. They are brought in during the design. So you solicit for them, and you select them, and you engage with them during the design phase. So you get those benefits of having that early contractor involvement. Advantages side, this is a very common delivery method at the state level. So UVA, Virginia Commonwealth University, the big projects that they do, they're doing CM at risk on delivery, and we are seeing this pick up. Localities are starting to do this more and more. As I, the project I'll talk about in Charlottesville, Albemarle County actually, did a CM at risk courthouse. So it is gaining more traction on the locality side. Again, having that early contractor involvement, not just for planning, but also for costing, so you don't have that bid day surprise. You're getting kind of real-time feedback as that design is being, as the design is evolving, you're getting feedback from the contractor on how much things cost. So you're not going to have that surprise, but it's also very helpful to have them do trade-offs. Hey, if I want to do this, how much is it going to cost? Okay, maybe I'm going to back that out of the scope to even things out. So you can do a little bit of that analysis. Increased collaboration. Owner still, the county would still maintain full control of the designer because you still have that separate contract with your designer. There is less pressure on being the low bidder and minimizing your management. So you, the management might be a little more right-sized for the project in terms of supervision and project management. Qualifications do factor in the selection. One of the other really good benefits of both this method and design build is you do have more ability to fast-track. You have a, you're bringing your contractor early, so if there are things like early site work or clearing a site or some of those type of things, you'll have a contractor in place that can do those things. So you're able to make up months many times in your construction duration. Disadvantages side, so under CM at risk, you're initially hiring really that CM as a consultant. You're not hiring them based on the cost of the overall project. That's something they give you later. You're hiring them as a consultant, really to provide you cost information and logistics planning and some of those kind of things. Once the design advances further and far enough, they give you what is called a guaranteed maximum price, and that's basically the price they say, we're going to build this project for this GMP. And there's a little bit of a relationship change when that happens, once you enter in a GMP, generally towards the end of design, they really become your contractor. But you've had a lot of opportunity to kind of establish collaboration and relationship with them before that happens versus the kind of the design bid build method. Potential higher management costs, again, the flip side of the kind of that competition that's driving down cost, and as the owner, you're still responsible really for design deficiencies because the architect's working for you. Okay, so the last one, design build. So this one, it looks a lot different than the other two because you generally have one contract. You're contracting with one entity, a design builder. So a lot of times the contract you have is with a general contractor, and then the contractor hires the designer, but the, so the designers are working through the contractor, not directly for you as the owner. Advantages, that can simplify things, just having a single entity. Again, you have the early contractor involvement as you would with the CM at risk delivery. This is, I'd have to qualify that a little bit for the next bullet here. So the way Virginia does design build is that it is sort of done as a low bid kind of setup where you put out information and the design builder's basically bid on the project. So there's a lot of that kind of competition to drive the price down. And that's one of the reasons, or the way it's set up in Virginia, this form of design build is not used very often, but design build is still very common in Virginia. It's done through something called PPA, PPEA, which I'll talk about the next slide. But you do have ability to fast-track. And then the last thing on the advantages is one of the things that a lot of owners really like about design build is since that designer is working for the contractor, if they mess up, they generally have to pay for it. So you're generally not having to deal with a bunch of change orders for designer errors, which a lot of people tend to like. Disadvantage aside, it's this form of design build is not used very much in Virginia. PPA is what is used for design build. To get those prices from design builders, sometimes you do have to hire a separate architect to come in and do what they call bridging documents. So they design like, they design it to 35% design, the project, and then you basically put that out to bid, and then the bidders bid on that 35% design. So that adds another layer, and because of the way that this is bid out, it can become less collaborative than I think design build really is intended to be. Again, that's why more entities choose the PPA delivery. All changes after you execute the contracts tend to be change orders. And then one of the facets of design build is since the architect is not working directly for you, a lot of owners feel like you don't have as much control of the architect because you, to get to the architect, you generally have to go through the contractor, and it's a little less direct. And of course, the architect is not acting as your agent as it is in the other two methods because of that reason. So just lastly, PPEA widely used for design build in Virginia, and PPEA accomplishes what is referred to in the industry as progressive design build. And all that really means is that you are really hiring your design builder more on a qualification level, and you are entering a contract with them based on qualifications. You, at that point, progress their design with them, and then once you progress it further enough, that's when you enter into a price with them. So that's where the term progressive comes from. Used in many localities, single entity contact, contract, early contractor involvement. Owner retains control early in design, so while they're still in that consultant role, you have a lot more control over design. Doesn't require the bridging documents that are required in the other form of design build that I talked about. And then all the other benefits of design build apply. Qualifications factor in selection, ability to fast-track, the errors and omissions, you're generally not responsible for those. Disadvantage side, similar to the past, the last slide in design build, you have less control over the architect because they're working directly for the contractor through the design build method. So just going to finish up by talking about a couple project examples. So this is a project that we were involved in over in Albemarle County on their new courthouse. Albemarle County had never done CM at risk before, but they saw this as a very complicated project, and I think the photos kind of bear some of that out. But they had brought us in to help kind of, help them implement a CM at risk procurement. So we helped them issue RFPs and RFQs for CM firms and participate in interviews and ultimately help land them on their, kind of their CM firm of choice. But this project, I think this was really the literal definition of shoehorning a new building into a site among other existing buildings. So sort of in the upper right on the aerial view there, that's an old historic opera house, and they were converting that into the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So it actually had a connector to this new courthouse that they're building in the center there, three-story courthouse. And on the left is an existing historic building they call the Jessup House, but you can just see how tight that construction had to be shoehorned in among those existing buildings. This is a very busy part of downtown Charlottesville. So, and this is really why they want to do CM at risk. This was not a simple project out in some rural area where there are no questions about access and logistics and phasing and planning. They really need to do a lot of logistics planning with a contractor early on. So that's why they went with a CM at risk delivery there, and the project on the left there, it's, I believe the facility is opened and active already. And then just last project, this is another project, not quite as tight as Charlottesville, but this is downtown Williamsburg, a new fire station that we worked on, and the City of Williamsburg really likes PPEA, which is again that progressive design build. So there were challenges with limited space that, this fire station was built on the site of an existing fire station. So the very first thing they had to do was tear the old fire station down, relocate the fire department into some temporary headquarters, and the design builder, they were involved early, so they helped with some of that logistics planning as well. And then just want to briefly touch on your project. So this was something that we brought in earlier this year to look at your new courthouse and where it was conceptually being sited. This is your existing complex out there on River Road. But we were asked by the county if this was something that would qualify for some of these collaborative or alternative delivery methods that we talked about, like a CM at risk or a design build. So there's, that's the state code references there for being able to use construction management and design build projects for being able to do that delivery method in a locality like Goochland. So one of the big requirements there before you, this is one of the things that the state requires of you, is that before you do one of these alternative methods, instead of doing design bid build, that you have to basically have a written determination of why you can't do design, why it's not fiscally advantageous or practical to do design bid build, that first delivery method that I talked about. And then one of the big factors that plays into that is, is it a complex project? So we take a good look at what does complexity mean? That's really, really derives whether it's appropriate to do construction management or design build for your project. So as we looked at this project and we talked to the Goochland staff, certainly a very busy and active campus. You get a lot of traffic, there's a lot of functions through there, existing courts, law enforcement, that's where your school administration is. Also very limited lay-down for construction access and lay-down areas where they're going to put their materials. So it's certainly a very challenging site. There's been a lot of crossover, and that's always a concerning thing, is making sure that we're keeping the traveling public safe and your facilities there can function without disruption, without construction causing disruption. And you want, the contractor really needs to have pretty free and clear access to efficiently be able to do their work. There, you also have challenging topography out there. There's a lot of sloping topography from east to west on that site, and that does factor into how much room the contractor is going to need to be able to do the construction. The more they're cutting into the slopes, the wider the footprint they're going to need for construction. So we did, we really did feel like there'd be a lot of advantages on this project to have early contractor involvement during design, bringing in a contractor that can help you with some of that phasing and planning. And then a courthouse itself is a pretty complex facility. There's a lot of security and other kind of technology systems that go in. Also has a ton of stakeholders. The state is involved in these projects because they're generally going to have some networking that has to go in the facility. So again, having some early contractor involvement to help with the complexity of the courthouse and the site, we felt would be helpful. So generally, it was our recommendation or feeling that this would qualify and meet the threshold for being able to do one of those alternative delivery methods during construction. And that's basically all we had prepared, and I know that was a kind of a mouthful, but happy to open it up for any questions.
Mr. Just a philosophical, having not looked at this too much in the public world, why would the state care about how we decide to implement a project if it's not state funds, it's our citizens' money? Why do they determine?
It's a great question. Yeah, I'm just not, not sure I have the answer. It flows, it's flow down. I mean, there's a, the state has a procurement act, and they, generally, there's procurement requirements flow down through the county and other cities. So I hate to tell you that's just the way it is, but my understanding is that those, they just flow down those requirements to you as a locality government.
Policy-wise, I think courthouses are considered to be provided for your judges who are in fact state employees. And so that may not be straight out of code or anything else, but a courthouse is generally thought to be for the benefit of judges, and the judicial system is run by the state.
Sure, but my understanding is even if you wanted to use this on a firehouse, we'd have to go through this.
That's correct. Yeah, these, if you read those, if you go to the state code that I have listed there, it very specifically says these are the commands that you have to follow if you're a local body, and then there's a whole different set for state institutions, but they're very closely aligned.
The reason, I'm not trying to trip you up, because usually if you know what they're concerned about, it helps me figure out how to answer, ask my questions.
Yeah. It's a good question. It's, it just goes back to law, and I'm not, probably not the best person to speak towards that.
So board members, there's a lot, lot to think about. As we know, this is going to be a 100-year project, at least in our community, and so, you know, we now, we now know that this project does qualify for an alternate procurement. I think the question now is, as we think about next steps for us, is do we want to move forward with a traditional design bid build? We know the advantages and disadvantages. We're knowing the complexity of this project and some of the benefits of bringing a contractor in on the front end and having a good relationship with your architect and the contractor from the get-go. You know, is that the direction that we want to go? Because ultimately, we'll have to determine what the RFP looks like, given these delivery methods, and so we as staff are certainly prepared to bring a recommendation to you for your consideration. We wanted to use this as a baseline today so that we're all on the same page regarding the different options and the advantages and disadvantages of each.
Well, I think we ought to get the judges to pay for it. Dictate everything, you know?
Can you pull up the?
Can you pull up the PPE slide just one more time? I think I had a question, but not.
Where do I go? This, yeah, let me.
Yeah, the advantages and disadvantages.
This one here?
Yeah.
I'm not having a master. Yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
Considering that we're trying to integrate in the historic courthouse with a newer courthouse, complicated design, would, I feel like this would be our, probably the preferred route. Is that kind of where you guys are thinking?
I think if you were to go with a alternative delivery, I think that the CM, if you didn't do CM, this would be my other suggestion. So I would say, say one or the other. This, this method is, I would say it's a little simpler to implement because you don't, if you were to go and seek proposals, you wouldn't necessarily need to send out a big elaborate RFP saying, we want all of these things. You would, it's a little lower threshold than that. You generally just kind of say, here's our vision, we're inviting, we're inviting proposals. So what you get is proposals from, from design build team. So you get a proposal from basically a contractor and an engineer working together. And generally, what you'd see in the proposal is different kind of concepts and things. It's good to give them some vision, so you wouldn't necessarily just say, put a courthouse here. You might say, this is where I want it and it has to tie into the existing courthouse and here are some other important parameters. Those are all kind of strategic things that we can work with. But this is a, for doing alternative delivery, we think this is a very good delivery method as well seam at risk. It brings a lot of the same advantages. The main difference with seam at risk, you're working with an architect and a contractor and have to do two separate solicitations. And under this, you essentially be doing, doing one solicitation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You use the term trade quality. I think I understand where it's going, but, you know, especially with the integration of a historic building, I view that as not only a person who knows the trades, but also can kind of speak to the integration between older buildings and newer structures. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I think that's, that's an important, that's an important qualification. And I think that would be another reason to maybe do one of these alternative deliveries is requesting, getting some of that expertise on your contractor's team. And so if you were to do an RFP for seam at risk or do, do an RFP for PPEA, those are one of the things you can request. Or you can state, this is very important to us, the integrating with the historic nature, we want to see someone on your team that has expertise in this field.
Yes. Good point. Yes, sir.
So I guess the money question is the money question. Based on your experience, which of these, for knowing our project and what we're trying to do, which of these typically will come in on budget, on time and on scope?
That was a, that's a good question. And this, I get this a lot. It's, you know, which is the cheapest? And for one, I'll try not to be too lengthy with this. But the one analogy I try to give is if you're, if you're going down a path and you take a fork in the path. So with this method, if you take the fork and do design bid build and it costs X, it's really hard to know what path Y would be because you never took that path. So you never figured out what that cost is. That's why you get, you get a lot of debate when you ask this question, what costs more? And I do feel like design bid build, since it is, I would characterize it probably as the most competitive, which tends to drive down price, you're probably going to get the lowest day one project cost, but it's probably more likely, I think there's a good chance that quality will be sacrificed, so you lose something there. And then it's more likely that you'll see some change orders and possible delays and some of those negatives. And I think the more, the more complex the project is, the higher that risk goes up by not having that early contractor involvement. So, great question. It's sort of a multi, a multi product answer, which, which one is going to be the most successful, you know, and best price. And I think there's different factors to define success. Cost is a factor, but also the quality and timeframe is a factor.
So if you were sitting in Jeremy's seat, which one would you be recommending to us?
I think either seam at risk or PPE.
So, so we don't get to change, we have to choose one of these, one of these avenues. So we don't get the chance to see how much we would have saved if it was significant enough to run the risk of saving the money and putting up with the other headaches and change orders and stuff like that. So how do you, how would we determine whether or not it's justified, you know, how much are you paying different, you know, more to do away with the headaches and get a better quality and so forth and so on?
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good question. It's hard to put an exact metric on it. I guess a few things at point. There are, with really all of these methods, there are off ramps. Even with seam at, seam at risk, there's an off ramp. So if you hire the CM and you bring them in early and you, and you get to the point where you get their construction price and you think the price is too high, that, you can take an off ramp and say, you know what, we're, we're done with you, we're going to put it out to bid, we think we can do better in, under that method.
So we'll get some advice on the way from the architects or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Their experience is?
Yeah.
What's coming in, way off?
Yes, yeah. And the big, the big difference, again, is having the early contractor pricing, you might not like what they say, but at least you haven't had, you haven't designed a building to 100% and then not know until it's 100% that you can't afford it. If you're getting, if you have them in early and they're giving you cost information, you have a lot more time to react to it. Okay, they're saying it's X, I can only afford Y, we're going to have to find a way to get back down to X. So that, there's, it can be a lot more interactive and collaborative by having, having them there early. And the other method is, I designed it 100% and I thought it was X, but now it's Y and now I can't do anything. I either have to go back to the drawing board or live with a bunch of cuts that are going to make me really unhappy with the way the facility ultimately turns out.
Which, between the PPE and the CMA?
Seam at risk.
Which produces a higher quality product, in your opinion?
Um.
Like the final product?
I think they're pretty, I think they're pretty equal. I think under seam at risk, since the architect's still working for you, you still do have a little bit more control over, over kind of quality and the designer. Whereas as PPE, PPEA, you don't have all that, as much control over designers. So that could maybe be a quality, quality factor. But I think in terms of cost and their overall management supervision, they're very equally kind of weighted.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, maybe I should have led with this question. Do, have you found that clients like county, you know, have aspirational dreams of design and whatnot that get away in actual structurally sound buildings? And like, would we be at risk if we went the CMA route versus the PPEA route? Or is it just a non-starter for a concern? I mean, is it just not something that happens?
Not, not for any kind of public safety because these, these facilities still have to meet, there's no change to, they still have to be submitted to your regulatory for your code official and still go through all of those exact same inspections. So from, from that standpoint, there should be zero difference in terms of like life safety features of these facilities. Quality wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be workmanship, but it might be things like, you know, I really wanted this type of wall paneling in my project and, and the design builders sort of, because of budget reasons, they changed it to this kind of less costly product that I'm not as crazy about. So that, that's really more of the things I'm talking about quality, nothing related to life safety. Under any of those, under anything I've talked about, life, life safety requirements don't change at all.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Etic.
All right, appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you for having us. Okay.
Do we have one more item, some appointments?
Yeah, board members, we do have one more item before we pause for a dinner break. And so we are asking for your approval of a few folks for appointments, specifically Mr. Martin Dean to serve as Planning Commission member for District Five to replace Mr. Dwayne Cosby. Mr. Dean's appointment pending your approval would be retroactive back to 11-1 of 25 and go through 3-31 of 28. Also seeking your approval for Doug Miller to serve as the Local Board of Building Code Appeals official, effective 11-1-25 to 10-31-27. Arnold Rosenberg nomination for the Board of Zoning Appeals, 11-1-25 through 10-31 of 2030. And both Austin Goine and Patrick Longerbeam to be serving as staff contacts for the RRTPO TAC and the Central Virginia Transportation Authority TAC, which is the Technical Advisory Committee. So seeking your approval of those nominations today.
So we've seen them in a package and can we do it all in one vote? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the nomination and appointments for November 1st as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that Mr. Cosby did a, I think, an exceptional job on the Planning Commission. And his reason for departure is career related. He's a pastor with his church, his bishop has asked him to take on increased responsibility with congregations outside of Virginia. And to his high credit, he could have kept the position, shown up for the meetings, but he did not feel that he would have put the work in. I think we're fortunate to have Mr. Dean agree to step up. He's a former head of the Fire Department's Auxiliary, or I should say, the Volunteer Association. He knows this county, he's a captain with Company One. And he brings a lot of energy. If you've met Martin and spent any time with him, he will wear you out. And he asks great questions and I think he's going to continue representing District Five on the Planning Commission in an exceptional manner that Mr. Cosby illustrated. So I'm very happy to present him as a nominee.
I think your comments on Mr. Cosby are right on target and I think we're very fortunate to have Mr. Dean. Any further questions, any further comments? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and dinner break, recess. Thank you.